The Commissioner's Court meeting may all the decisions be pleasing unto you. Lord, there are many unspoken prayer requests in this room. I ask you be with all them people, with Terry's mother. But I have a special one. Steve Reagan. Lord. Heal his body. Heal his mind. Let him and his family know that your grace is with him and sufficient. Forgive us our mislands and shortcomings, Jesus, I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, at this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal acts can be taken on these items. At this meeting, each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Summers?
On September the seventeenth, this court chose to disregard the Open Meetings Act. That choice led to a contested and therefore an abrupt ending to the meeting. Afterwards, my commissioner invited me to meet with him downstairs in his office. Myself, Commissioner Merrick, and Snyder Daily News, Steve Reagan, went downstairs where I chose to remain in the hallway until a friend came downstairs as well. Me wanting to wait is what irritated Mr. Merrick, and he voiced two inappropriate questions to me. He asked me, "Are you scared?" After I replied, "I am not scared and I am not intimidated." He then asked me, "You think I'm gonna kiss ya?" Mr. Merrick stepped inside his office, and once again, I stated to him that I did not feel that he has done what he said he would do during his campaign. As he stepped towards me, he said, "Do not call me a liar." He raised both hands, and he shoved me backwards. So yes, I was shoved. I filed a civil complaint against Mr. Merrick. Mr. Merrick was issued a citation. Mr. Merrick paid a fine plus court costs and was instructed to take an eight-hour management course. In today's political world, often things like this, the offender suffers no consequences. I have never been one to let something like this, in this case, something that happened to me, go unreported. My reputation has been trashed, and it took me a few weeks to regroup, but I will be attending these meetings as often as I can. I have spent the last few weeks working on a rollback petition. I have heard about the intimidation that this county and the city has used on their employees and towards local businesses regarding the rollback petition. A rollback petition is a voter's right. Signing the petition is a voter's right. The county and the city should not have infringed upon those rights. For those that did sign the rollback petition, if any of them are retaliated against, it will be known and steps will be taken to right that wrong.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Summers, for your comments. Anybody else?
I just want to say thank you. I saw that there was a group that came to the Dunn Community Center. This time, there was no trash. And I did see the Parks people come back later. But they did forget to get the beer bottles out of the flower bed. The raised flower bed. So it was a lot better, and I thank you for that.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Nora Cummins? Okay. Presentation and discussion of Department Heads Committee and Board Reports. Any discussion on these board reports? Any comments on those board reports? All in favor?
Good to hear.
Okay. Court to consider approval of previous court minutes.
Mr. Scott always does an excellent job of down very key errors in her minutes, and I appreciate that. And I make motion that we accept them, and appreciate your time.
All in favor?
Thank you.
In a precinct project scheduling step? Anything going on?
Oh, yes.
Shoulders up.
Yeah.
That should have worked real good.
That's good.
I wish we had even one of them like that, too. You can already tell that structure is beginning to move over.
Yeah.
A little bit.
I need to go see what you're doing.
We're just, what you say, shot two or three foot.
Probably three.
Three foot on each side. So anything was eaten. Rode up, peeling it out of there. So I think that maybe we can just get it wet enough to get it packed. But I never seen so much separate work out there. I mean, just knowing that two fifty-three. But they've stopped and said, "Thank you, Rangers, for doing that." So I tell you something, making this happen.
Absolutely. So I want to go out there with you sometime and see what you're doing. Anything else? All right, Court to consider accepting donations to county entities. Looks like the only donations this time were to the senior center.
Well, that tells you that the people in Skerr County really love that place because they're always making donations.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm making notes, we accept the donation for the Skerr County Senior Citizens Center.
Exactly. All in favor? Court here, a presentation from Snyder Police Officer Josh Reeves regarding the Snyder Police Association and the Combined Law Enforcement Association of Texas Program, CLEET. Discuss and consider giving vendor status of payroll deduction for Skerr County Law Enforcement Personnel's membership to the CLEET program. Officer Reeves?
Commissioner, Judge, I brought DJ Scott with me. He's our local CLEET field rep. Just real quick, we recently adopted a new constitution and bylaws that permits the Skerr County deputies and dispatchers and jailers to be a part of the Snyder Police Association. With that, the Snyder Police Association is affiliated with the Combined Law Enforcement Association of Texas. It allows them to be a part of our association, but also, by extension, they're already eligible to be members of CLEET themselves. What makes that difficult is the city employees at the police department are afforded from the city vendor status for the Snyder Police Association and CLEET, which allows us to have those dues deducted directly from our paycheck. Allows us to be contributing members of the association and CLEET without having to worry about sending in a check monthly or yearly or whatever. Being a part of the association allows the deputies to be a part of a family. We're doing community-oriented things. We just handed out Thanksgiving meals to needy families. We have a scholarship that we do yearly. We've got a Christmas project coming up and various other stuff in the community that we plan on doing in this coming year. I need people. I want dispatchers. I want jailers. I want the deputies to be a part of us, but I also want that to be easier on them. So DJ would like to give a couple minutes of time to kind of explain further what CLEET is.
Morning, gentlemen. What CLEET is, is basically an insurance policy for law enforcement, jailers, dispatchers. It's like an insurance policy. We back the law enforcement in critical incidents, officer-involved shootings, in custody deaths, or any type of disputes that come up. We have our legal team that backs them up so they don't have to worry about their due process. We're basically their backup. When they need help, they call us. We can assist them. If they don't need our help, we stay out of their way because it's their home. But like you said, when I was down here, the county was asking for payroll deduction so that it would be easier on them biweekly in order to be members of CLEET.
Thank you.
That being said, we're like, as the agenda says, we're requesting vendor status for CLEET and by extension, also the Snyder Police Association.
Okay. Having been a member of both when I was an officer, CLEET and Snyder Police Association. Snyder Police Association does unlock the community. When I was a member, we started that scholarship program back in late nineties, early two thousands. And it's, I think, is it still a thousand dollars, too?
I changed it this year. We did five hundred dollar scholarships, but we opened it up to all the schools rather than just Snyder High School.
That's fantastic, yeah. So they do that. They do a lot of good things. During the summer, we used to go out to the Fourth of July and the Snyder Police Association, when you saw police officers out there under the tent, under the canopy, it wasn't Snyder Police Department, it was Snyder Police Association. And they would do raffles and stuff like that to get money for the scholarships. And CLEET, they are a great organization for law enforcement. They, I guarantee, weren't y'all associated, didn't y'all help Darryl Campbell when he had his incident years ago? And it's protection for them. There's an investigation anytime something happens, and this is basically their protection against lawsuits or any kind of criminal action. But if there's criminal action, there's going to be criminal action. But that's, they're both good associations, I believe. Is there any issue with giving either one of them vendor status?
No.
I think it's a great thing to support our local law enforcement. And so I would make a motion that we allow our employees to be able to have deducted from payroll for those that would like to support our law enforcement.
Will y'all be sending out like a letter to the law enforcement personnel? Or what? Because I'll need to get a W-9 filled out for either CLEET or Snyder Police Association or both.
Mr. Scott accompanied me here today. I informed him that following the Commissioner's Court meeting, if approved, he is prepared to explain to the Treasury Department how that's all supposed to work. And then I've also set up a time aside to speak with the Treasurer about how it's supposed to work with Snyder Police Association. On our end, it'll be a little easier. CLEET, their main office is down in Austin. So it's working a little differently for the two of us, but it's around about, yes, we will send out a notification to the individual law enforcement officers and the dispatchers informing of the change and how it's going to be easier on them. But yes, we do have some paperwork and some instructions set aside to assist the county in that transition.
Okay, CLEET also does like the DA's investigators, the people that have a T-Club license.
Sure.
Acting like your probation officers and stuff like that. So anybody in the county that's employed also has that security that they can join also with payroll deduction. Makes it a little bit easier.
Sure. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Did you?
Their lives on the line for every one of us every day, so I say it's a motion.
All right, so that's your second. All right, all in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Court here, a presentation from DA Davidson and Company on refinancing jail bonds. I do have a question for y'all. Are you proposing this as an underwriter or as the financial advisor?
Financial advisor.
Financial advisor. Okay, all right, thank you.
Judge, if I may, for the record?
Sure.
For the record, my name is Vince Viallo, Specialized Public Finance. We're currently the county's financial advisor. I think in good conscience, I'd like to step out of the room while DA Davidson makes her presentation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Judge Commissioners, thank you for having us here this morning. Steve Perry with DA Davidson and Company. Obviously, you've got your existing financial advisor here, so that's interesting development. So we are proposing this. I don't know that there's necessarily a role for an underwriter in this situation that we're talking about here. What we'll get to here in a second is what we're thinking about in terms of the best way to capture savings for the county. So we do have a disclosure here. Actually, within our presentation, we would not be able to serve as an underwriter because our angle here was to serve as a financial advisor. So I've got some information here on interest rates. Interest rates are very low. I won't spend a whole lot of time. Within the last couple of months, we've hit all-time lows in interest rates. August of this year, we hit the lowest ever borrowing cost that we've had for any municipality or county city, school district. On the next page, there is information on the amount of money that's come in that's available for investing in municipal bonds. Every week this year, we've had money flowing in a billion or so per week. So there's plenty of money to invest. So all those things to say that it's a favorable environment for folks that are looking to save money by refinancing. What caught my interest in your situation is that we actively do what we call private placements. Something that we've done for other folks that have similar credits like yours. And if you'll flip to the next page, I put together savings. Where it says refunding opportunity overview. We have done this same term going out to roughly 2040 at, you know, what we're talking about, two and a half percent interest rate. So I think that there's a good opportunity to capture savings from doing something like this. Obviously, like I said, it's interesting that your existing financial advisor is here. I think you'll, you want to hear from him and get his perspective. Not sure, but yeah, this is a sort of a cost-free opportunity if it's something that you decided to pursue. Basically, it's just a matter of putting together a request for financing. And we send that out and solicit interest from different investors like banks, short-term investors. And if the savings don't meet your goals, then we don't pursue the process. So essentially, there are no costs associated with pursuing something like this. So.
That's to find out if it is possible.
Find out if it works. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Find out if it's something that's of interest to the county.
So if it works or it doesn't work, there is no cost.
Correct.
And you can compile a list of those people that you've done this similar thing for, that we can contact and visit with?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So later on, there's information in here about our firm. You know, we will follow up and send you that information related to where we've done that sort of financing recently. We've got lists of other counties that we work with. So like I said, I just wanted to cut to the chase because you're existing financial advisors here and that puts us in an awkward position.
You did step out. Now, you're stating that over the twenty-year period, we could save over eight hundred thousand dollars on our current bond.
Yes, sir.
And that, in some of our emails back and forth, we discussed our current credit rating and the probability that our credit rating is going to drop again this year.
Yes, sir.
And you stand by this?
I think it's realistic. I mean, there's a chance that we get told no, and that's why I wanted to put forth the sort of a no-cost option to pursue something like this. There are literally no costs if you decide not to pursue this. And I did this exact thing for somebody else who had, I would argue, worse credit. So that's why when I started looking around and saying, well, gosh, I just did this for somebody that was a small school district that, you know, would have been in a much worse position. They didn't even have a credit rating. So that's why I thought that maybe it was something that would be an option for you. Now, there is an opportunity, too. I've talked with a bond insurance company that said that they would be willing to provide a bond insurance policy, and the savings could be even higher. But, you know, I didn't want to put something in place that potentially you would have to have costs associated with it if you decided that the savings weren't attractive. Because interest rates go up, interest rates go down. They're actually down quite a bit today. So I would venture to say that if you went into the market today, these savings would be ten thousand dollars a year higher had you put together a bond financing. So, and had you done this last summer with your credit rating intact, you know, the savings would have been even higher. So just in my opinion, that's why we thought it was worth bringing to your attention because I believe that you've kind of missed a couple of opportunities to save a significant amount of money.
Of course, you know, county government or any government works very slowly because of the statutes that we have to deal with. My understanding is we would have to go out for bids and have anyone that's interested to come in, including our present financial officer. Provide information somewhat like yours, and then the court, if so desired, would have to make that decision. So we just can't do it when we want to, you know? I mean, it'd be very good to be nimble, but this is not one of those nimble situations.
Right, yeah.
Never is for county government. So we did the best we can.
I understand.
And I certainly appreciate you coming and sharing with us because anytime we can save our community money, we certainly want to do that and have done it in the past. A little over two million dollars that we've saved by refinancing something significant to this. And so we always want to do that when possible.
Yeah. And we appreciate it, and like I said, we wanted to show you the opportunity. You know, didn't want to put anybody in an awkward position, but that's the way we see it.
Sure. Did you have any questions? Anybody else have any questions? Is there any further information?
No, sir, that's it.
All right, thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
I would like that. People that you have disarmed before.
We'll do that.
Yeah, we'll get that to you this week.
Thank you.
It would have to be substantial savings to pay a hundred thousand dollars to do it.
Yeah.
I mean.
Is that what the cost would be if we did go forward about those amounts down here, which would be?
Yes, sir. Those are rough estimates, and the savings are net of those costs, so none of that's out of pocket. That's rolled into.
It's rolled into, so over the period.
So the eight hundred, just to be clear, the eight hundred and nineteen thousand is the savings without the cost. The cost is not there. I mean, that's what we would get.
That's it, that's it.
Do you want to hear from our current financial advisor?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate your time.
Can we actually hear from our? Says particularly DA Davidson, I would love to hear from him.
Well, I think since it's pertaining to being our financial advisor, I mean, they are our financial advisor. They have been for a number of years. Unless you want to call the county attorney up here and get his insight, I would definitely want Vince to be able to speak.
I do, too, but I don't want to go beyond what's written on our agenda. I'd like to know that.
That's true.
Vince has helped save a lot of money for this community in the past. And of course, all we're doing is just.
May I go down and ask him?
Sure.
We're getting a verification as to whether we can hear from him.
Yes, sir.
The way the agenda is working. Turned off accounts.
On this turn, when water turned off the. It's accounts that are off that that's what they owe. Correct.
Yes. Yes, correct.
And it's not necessarily just one account, it's multiple accounts.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you. Yes, we can. All right.
All right, very good. Well, Judge Commissioners, again, for the record, my name is Vince Viallo, Specialized Public Finance. We are, as on record, as the county's financial advisor. Worked with the county for a number of years. Thank y'all for giving me this time. I understand y'all are contemplating the possibility of refinancing some of the existing bonds that we had previously issued to the county. I'd like to hand out some information, go over this as quickly as I can, make sure your questions are answered. Y'all understand the project and know what it is that you're considering doing before we get off into it, if you would be so kind, sir. Gentlemen, while I'm going through this, if you have any questions, please feel free to speak up. Again, I want to make sure your questions are answered and you're comfortable with the process if the court decides to proceed on future occasions. On the first page, I thought it might be important to explain the roles of the parties that are involved in the financing for a governmental entity, in this case, the financing for the county. The first party listed here is the financial advisor. This is the role that we have filled for the county going back to the 1990s, I guess. Some of the differences as far as what a financial advisor does now, a financial advisor has got a legal fiduciary responsibility to you, the issuer. So the financial advisor's first primary focus, first goal, is to take care of the issuer in these cases. The financial advisor will work with the issuer in structuring debt and getting the debt to the marketplace, where basically you're representatives in the marketplace to get your debt, you're sold, and get y'all funds in the marketplace. We'll structure your bond issues, let you know what the tax rate implications would be by issuing those bonds. Anything that has to do with the bond issue, your financial advisor is your representative as far as that goes. Another party involved in this is the purchaser or the underwriter. Now, there's a couple of ways you can get an underwriter. You can do it via negotiated process with your financial advisor or a competitive bid process with your financial advisor. The underwriter has got a legal fiduciary responsibility to the investors. That's who they represent. They don't represent the issuers. So your best interest is not going to be looked after by the underwriter. They're going to take care of their clients, the investors. The financial advisor has the responsibility of taking care of the issuer, y'all in this case. And the third party involved in this is the bond counsel. That's the law firm that is involved in the financing. They will provide all the legal documents related to the financing, the authorizing documents such as the order authorizing the issuance of the debt. They also provide a legal opinion and a tax opinion that the investors look towards whenever they buy financings such as bonds or COs from the marketplace. Any questions so far? Okay, a little history about us with the county for some of the commissioners that we have. Okay, a little history about us with the county for some of the commissioners that we have worked with before. We have been with the county since two thousand and nine, in January of two thousand and nine. We worked with the county on the sixteen point four million dollar CO issue for the jail project. Whenever we did that jail project, we were able to get what's called a five-year call feature on that CO issue. Back in, whenever that was, that sixteen point four million dollar issue. A five-year call feature is extraordinary from the standpoint of what the marketplace accepts as a ten-year call feature. Once you start trying to shorten that call feature up, you start paying an interest rate premium. We were able to negotiate a five-year call feature on that CO issue with no cost to the county by doing that. So it was a very, very unique thing for that financing. What's a call feature? A call feature gives the issuer, the county in this case, the ability to call in that debt and prepay it after a certain period of time. Whenever a buyer buys a bond or a CO in the marketplace, they want to know they've got that investment for a certain period of time. Typically, what is customary in the marketplace is a ten-year call feature. They know they've got that bond issue for ten years before it can be called off mundrum. And again, once you start shortening that call feature, usually you see a big price for that. But we didn't pay a big price for that when we did this CO issue back in two thousand and nine. So we got a five-year call feature on that issue. As a result of that five-year call feature, we were able to come in in twenty thirteen and refinance a large portion of that oh-nine issue. And we saved the county over two million dollars net by doing that, just by lowering the interest rate on that issue. In addition to that, in twenty seventeen, we came back in and we refinanced the rest of that oh-nine issue. And we saved just about two hundred and forty thousand plus by doing that. So we've refinanced all of the oh-nine issue. So what are we looking at refinancing right now? What are we talking about? Well, if you turn to page three, what we're looking at refinancing is a large portion of the twenty thirteen refunding issue. Now, you'll see in the red bracket there, those are the bonds or maturities that we're contemplating refinancing out of this issue. They're currently callable, which means we have the ability to call them in and prepay them. And what we'd be doing is we'd be calling these three percent interest rates in, paying them off, issuing new refunding debt at a lower interest rate. And instead of paying on this three percent, we'd be paying at a lower interest rate, just like refinancing a mortgage at a lower interest rate. That's how we get our savings by doing this. So what we're talking about refinancing is a portion of this twenty thirteen issue, and it's the three percent coupons. The two percent coupons just are not cost effective. They would wind up costing us if we were to throw those into the mix. So we're only looking at these three percent plus coupon interest rates by doing this. Everything good so far?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to kind of go off in the weeds here a little bit and I apologize. But on page four, as y'all are probably aware, back in twenty eighteen, the county was rated double A minus from Standard and Poor's Corporation. A credit rating is just like a personal credit rating. Standard and Poor's is an organization that the marketplace accepts their review and their analysis on what they assign the credit value is of a bond or debt issue. So the marketplace looks to that as far as credit quality of the issuer. In twenty eighteen, we had a double A minus credit rating, which is a very good credit rate. Back in, right, I believe it was sometime in twenty eighteen, S and P came back and they lowered our credit rating to A plus, which is one notch below the double A minus. A plus is still a good rating, it's good. But what was going on is we were having difficulties financially maintaining general fund balances and things of that nature. Now, Standard and Poor's in that rating analysis said there is the possibility they're going to come back and look at dinging us again on the credit rating if we can't get our fund balances back up. Well, since twenty eighteen, we have not been able to do that. So we've been on negative watch from Standard and Poor's since that time. In my professional opinion, I think we're going to get dinged again by S and P, probably from an A plus to an A is my suspicion. And I think that is probably going to occur in January, if not February of twenty twenty. That's coming pretty quick, I don't think there's any way to avoid that, given what's been going on the last few years, that's just happening. So I think we're looking at getting to an A rating in the very near future by doing this. I don't think it'll be less than that, but I don't know that for a fact. So I just kind of see that coming right now. So why is that important? Well, that going from an A plus to an A will have an impact on debt that we issue in the marketplace. The lower our credit rating is, the higher the interest rates you pay in the marketplace. It's just like a lender, you know, when you borrow money, they're willing to loan money to people that need it the least, that have the best credit rating. Well, since our credit rating's going down, that interest rate is going to be slightly higher in the marketplace if we were to issue debt. And in this case, we're contemplating issuing debt to refund or refinance that twenty thirteen issue. If everybody's with me so far, we're good. Okay. So there are two ways, there's two marketplaces for bonds or COs or public debt. One is the private marketplace, and these are made up of commercial banks. And the other marketplace is the open market. And this is the investors, mutual funds, individual investors, all of these other, other investors is the open marketplace and the public fund. So I think one of the things that DA Davidson has proposed is possibly looking at doing a bank placement in the private marketplace. Some of the benefits of this is you don't have to get a credit rating to do this, you just basically do it. You don't have to get a credit rating or go to the marketplace, it's just you take bids or you place it directly with banks. Whenever we do bank placements, we will take bids across the state. Now, on page five is an example of three bank placement bids that we did in November for A-rated credits that have the same maturity schedule or term as the proposed refunding issue that we're contemplating. So it's a very apples-to-apples comparison. And again, these are three that we did in November. So you can see example one, we got an interest rate of two point nine seven percent on that bid, bank bid. On example two, we got an interest rate of two point six five, and example three, we got an interest rate of two point eight three. If you average those three bids up that we took in November for similar type credits or similar type financings, that's an average interest rate of two point eight one percent. So let's just assume that we go out for bid for Scory County refunding bonds to commercial banks only. And it would be fifty commercial banks that we would go out to for these bids, we're soliciting bids from them, and they're bidding the interest rate. Let's assume that we get a bid back of two point eight one percent. What does that look like? Well, that's what page six looks like. Excuse me. Page six is a refunding scenario if we were to do a bank placement and we got that bid back at two point eight one percent. What that does to us is we are refinancing that series twenty thirteen bond issue. We're refinancing maturities twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-four. Those have interest rates associated with them of three percent to three point three seven five percent. And the principal outstanding is nine point three million. So what we'd be doing is we'd be issuing nine point five billion dollars in refunding bonds at an interest rate of two point eight one percent. And that differential net savings to the county is that column on the far right side of the page. We're talking about twenty-five thousand bucks a year on a bank bid situation, overall savings just under three hundred and thirty. It'd be right in that neighborhood, give or take. So that's what we see a bank bid coming in at. Now, what if we were to take a different course of action? What if we were to do an open market issue, not a private bank deal, but an open market issue? Now, that is going to mean that we have to get a credit rating. But gentlemen, I'm telling you, that train's coming regardless, and I think it's coming sooner than later. So it might be time just to force their hand and be done with it. On page seven is a scenario that shows an open market issue. So if we were to go to the open marketplace, get our rating, we get our rating deemed from an A plus to an A, we accept that. This is based upon an A-rated analysis in the open marketplace on today's interest rates. So we'd be refunding the same maturities, the same old interest rates, except in this case, we'd be issuing the refunding bonds at two point five nine percent. That's where rates are right now. And what that does to our savings, it helps our savings to about thirty-five, thirty-eight thousand dollars per year, just under forty thousand dollars per year in savings by going to the open marketplace. Total savings about five hundred and twenty thousand over the life. And again, gentlemen, these are net savings to the county after all costs.
I'd also like to point out that's also ending at twenty thirty-four instead of twenty forty, so six years shorter than the other proposed.
We would not extend the maturities. I absolutely refuse unless we are, unless my client is under dire financial conditions. Whenever I do a refinancing to stretch out the maturities. If we have a bond that we're refinancing and that original bond pays off in twenty thirty-four, we're not going to refinance beyond twenty thirty-four. That's as long as we're going. Again, unless there are dire financial reasons to do it otherwise.
So if you do refinance under your, which will, I agree, our credit rating's going down, they said it wants. If we do refinance with that new credit rating, what does it do to our credit rating after that? Does it, is it like personal credit, you get more credit and you're, or you get another ding on your credit rating and it goes down again?
What's going to happen on this, let's say that we go from A plus to an A, we know it's coming, we go to an A. We do this refinancing, by virtue of doing this refinancing and lowering our debt service cost, it can only improve our debt picture. Because we're lowering our debt service cost. Now, lowering it by forty thousand dollars a year, that's a drop in the bucket. The main thing that is going to impact your rating moving forward is how the court handles your finances moving forward.
Sure.
That is going to be the main driver on your credit rating. This would help, but again, this is a drop in the bucket.
Sure.
On the last page, gentlemen, is a graph that illustrates where tax-exempt interest rates have been for the last ten years. Obviously, you follow this graph all the way to the right side, we're in a very low interest rate environment right now. This is the lowest rates have been in my professional career, which spans over thirty-five years. So for what it's, it's a good time to look at refinancing if the numbers are there. Now, Judge Commissioners, having gone through this presentation, what I would advise, regardless of whether you decide to pursue a refunding or not, regardless of whether you decide to retain us as financial advisor or DA Davidson or whatever mechanism y'all want to go. If y'all decide to move forward, one of the things I would recommend to the county is that when you do this refunding bond issue, you do what is called a parameters order. A parameters order authorizing the issuance of the refunding bonds. Now, a parameters order is a mechanism by which this court can authorize the issuance of refunding bonds. It turns your financial advisor loose to go out in the market and get that transaction done. But it has to be done at that parameter level or better before it can be affected.
That's what we did in for the two thousand seventeen bond.
Yes, ma'am. And the judge would be the pricing officer that is named in the parameters order. So what happens is if you approve the parameters order and it's got a certain level of savings that has to be obtained or vested before that transaction can be done. Once that transaction is done, your financial advisor will call the judge, tell the judge, judge, here's what we've done. We have met or we have exceeded the parameters order by this much, do we have your authorization to do the transaction? The judge will say, yes, if you've exceeded the parameters order, then yes, you've got that transaction. Then they get that transaction done in the marketplace. But it sets a criteria. That way, you're not turning somebody loose that will show you, oh, we can get you two million dollars in savings by doing this. And you say, yeah, go do it. And they come back and they go, well, we can only get four hundred thousand. And they'll say, this is better than nothing. And you go, no, that was not the deal. So by approving the parameters order, you are setting a criteria in place that your consultants have to meet or exceed that level before that transaction will be accomplished on behalf of the county. And again, that's regardless of who you utilize in this transaction if the court decides to move forward.
Anybody have any questions?
So we were, we would have been able, what is the earliest time that in the last year that we've been able to refinance these bonds? Is this now the only?
This is not the earliest, we could have done this earlier, but there are a couple of things to keep in mind. The market, the bond market is just like the stock market, it is constantly moving, interest rates, okay? So we could have affected this transaction before today, but our savings may not have been at this level. We're also, for lack of a better term, I'm being crass by saying this, we're waiting on the other shoe to drop on our rating. If the court decides to go ahead and, and push this thing as far as saying, yeah, let's do the refunding, let's go to the open marketplace, then we're going to push the rating agencies, okay, let's just, let's get it on, let's do it, get the A and be done with it. So we've been kind of waiting for that, that downgrade to go from A plus to A. We've been watching the marketplace and the market has been going down consistently since that time. But the first time that we were eligible to do this, this refunding on this thirteen issue was probably, I would say, about August of this year. Was when it first became available to us.
And so I was here during sixteen, seventeen, and nineteen and begged the court not to run deficit budgets. And so did our auditor and so did GM Robinson, our commissioner here. What the people in this county need to know is that a majority of this court is three members. And there were three members that decided that that needed to be done to the tune of four million dollars plus, given back through deficit spending to the taxpayer, which we want to give back to the taxpayer any time we can. But look at the situation that we have been in because of it. And that's what you're stating whenever you say because of our financial situation, that we have been downgraded in our credit rating. And probably going to get downgraded again. So you would think that if the taxpayer will allow us to put a million dollars back in reserves or more for the next year, that possibly our credit rating could improve rather than continue to deteriorate.
It very well could, Commissioner, and credit ratings, like many other things in life, they're a lot easier to go down than they are to pull back up. There are criteria, there are guidelines that we look for within the industry as far as fund balances and acceptable fund balance levels go. Granted, you know, I don't like carrying taxpayer money, it's their money, they're paying it. However, the county also has a responsibility to take care of the finances of the citizens within the county. That also entails carrying a reserve fund balance that should an emergency pop up within the county, that you've got funds to take care of that emergency, because you never know from year to year what will happen. I'll tell you right up front, there are some governmental entities, in my humble opinion, that do carry excess balances that are higher than what they should, should carry. On the flip side, I think there is a level that a governmental entity should carry as a fund balance, just for the safety of the public entity itself, because again, you never know what emergencies will happen from year to year. Yes, S and P has looked at our fund balances and how we've been pulling our fund balances down. And that is the rationale, the primary rationale for our downgrades as far as they are concerned.
You're not saying a dollar amount, because it's going to be different for everybody.
Yes.
What is your estimation of what someone?
There are some rule of thumbs, there are some rule of thumbs, again, it is unique for every entity.
Yes.
For a typical county, you know, I want to see somewhere, and this is a bare minimum, and I'm not saying for Scory County.
Sure.
This is a bare minimum, I want to see a minimum of three months' worth of expenditures to be retained as your minimum general fund ending balance year from year, and that's a minimum, sir.
Amen.
So that's, that's my opinion.
Okay.
And I've got other clients that have much more than that. And again, at some point, it becomes, guys, we don't need this much, and so, but at a minimum, three months of expenditures.
Anybody else have any questions? Good point.
Yeah, I've laid a lot of information on y'all in a very short period of time. Again, thank you for your patience and for hearing me out. If the court at some future date wishes to proceed with this, let me know. Whether it's with us or not with us, I will certainly give you the best guidance that I can. Don't hesitate to call me if we can be of any assistance.
All right, thank you very much for the presentation, we appreciate it. My only question is not going to be for you, it's going to be for someone else.
To my knowledge, it's all good.
I would say it's been so long, I used to have hair back then, but it's. I probably had hair.
You had more than I did.
Well, we're just not saying much, man.
It would just not say it looks like.
Thank y'all very much. I hope you all have a Merry Christmas and a safe Christmas. And again, if we can do anything to help, y'all let us know. Thank y'all.
All right, let's discuss and consider adoption of the two thousand nineteen county holiday schedule. It doesn't look like we have any odd falling holidays like we did this year, like one falling on a Thursday. So.
You don't want to get shot there on holiday, do you? You don't want to get shot there on holiday, do you? Well, I've looked at it, I just, I can't find the problem with it. I might motion to approve the two thousand twenty holiday schedule.
All right, Court to discuss and consider setting regular commission court meeting dates for fiscal year twenty twenty. Would be the Thursday, Tuesday of each month. Now that the rules have changed for us, the legislator loosened up on us a little bit. We can, we can go to one regular meeting. We don't have to have that special meeting.
We've been waiting on this a long time. I made the motion to approve the commissioner's court dates for two thousand twenty.
That'll make it easier on paper.
Third, third Monday?
Third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday, I'm sorry.
That would really mess everybody up.
Yeah, I know. You moved me to Mondays. Don't do that. Or Tuesdays, okay. I'll be here.
We could have two possibly, but this gets settled one regular month on the third Tuesday. All right, we voted on that.
Yes.
Court to discuss and consider renewing the two thousand twenty bond service agreement.
The bond agreement is, well, it's statewide automated victim notification services. Savins is the actual grant now through the Office of Attorney General. Vine is victim information and notification every day. This is something we've been a part of since two thousand and two with the Office of Attorney General. Basically, we, there's a tower downstairs in the server room that is always on constantly. If you have any victims within this area who has an offender, whether it's a rape victim or whatever, they can call the, a number and that system will automatically let them know where in the system the offender is, if they're about to be released or anything like this. So this is, we don't pay anything for it. We're basically a pass through for the state for this deal, but they've changed up the agreement a little bit where we actually have to sign this longer agreement in here and then I submit paperwork to the Office of Attorney General every quarter.
Well, I don't know why we wouldn't continue to be a part of that. So I make the motion, we renew the two thousand twenty bond service agreement.
Let's consider certification of additional revenue in the formal proceeds from other counties for housing inmates.
There's a new copy of that. Who's this one? That one didn't have, we got another payment in the end of last week. So for the same, for prisoner keep. So this is just going to have the additional amount.
That's a lot more money than that one.
Yeah. This is certified revenue for the prisoner keep for inmates. Seventy-four thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars that we received additional to go into there.
Yeah, unless they crime, they'll pay.
All right, let's consider approval of line item transfers and budget agreements.
I want to start with the budget amendments, because that's what we have on the bottom. First budget amendment I have is for the jail and sheriff. Utilities, twenty-three hundred and six thousand. And then contract labor, six thousand four hundred. It's the I have no idea what he wrote there. Something open.
An additional.
Third pod, okay. It's for the extra costs for the other inmates that we've been receiving. And then because of our contract, we had with S H P, it was for a certain number of inmates and because we've brought in more inmates, this is the additional amount. Budget amendment for the golf course. Utilities, fifty-five hundred. Ground supplies, twenty-five hundred. Fuel and oil and grease, six ninety-nine seventy-eight. Maintenance repair miscellaneous, four thousand. Medical insurance, four thousand. And part-time, twenty-five, forty-five, thirty. Total of nineteen, two forty-five oh eight. Projected costs until the end of the year.
A big chunk of that is because of the
That's the only two budget amendments. The rest are line on transfers. So county clerk, part-time, six hundred dollars out of general payroll, pay election. County clerk, two twenty-three, twenty-three, out of office supplies, cost of election. Can I just keep rolling through these? J P two, education and training, four hundred, out of office supplies. Clear up over budget line and her training. Information technology, which is the I T department, equipment under a thousand, but thirty-eight dollars ninety-nine cents out of equipment from a thousand to five thousand. Jail operating supplies, three thousand, now doctor medical fees. Inmate, increased inmate population was the reason. Sheriff's office operating supplies, twenty-four sixty-four oh three and fuel and oil, thirteen fifteen seventy-six. Out of education and training and investigative expense. Increased transports and inmate population. County welfare. Part-time, two thousand. Office supplies, two hundred, out of general payroll and drug expense. Boys, Skerry County Youth Center. Utilities, three thousand, lease rentals, five hundred, out of maintenance, activity and activity. To clear up the lines for the end of the year. Parks Department, capital outlay, ten thousand five hundred. Communications, four hundred. Out of part-time utilities, this is to purchase one of that truck from the sheriff's office. And then also for increasing utilities. Precinct. Precinct three, road and bridge, equipment, one thousand to five thousand for fifty-four hundred. Out of machine hires, sprayer for my request to control.
We're getting enough houses and trees out there, but if we have now, I don't want to take a chance on it.
Yeah, you're going to kill some grass.
Precinct four, road and bridge, part-time, two thousand, out of fuel and oil. J P tech line, J P one maintenance agreement, a hundred dollars out of J P one maintenance and repair. And it's to clean up her line for the Taylor case man, Tyler case management support. Golf course, fuel and oil and grease, fifty-five fifty-six. Operating supplies expense, fifteen ninety-nine. And cellular service, five oh one fifty-five, fifty-one, I mean, out of office supplies, tires and tubes, other payments and janitorials. To balance deficit amounts and accounts as listed per budget. Another golf course, medical insurance, one ninety-one ninety-eight. Utilities, twenty-two fifty-nine seventy-seven. Maintenance repair miscellaneous, ten thousand one oh eight thirty-three. Ground supplies, ninety-six seventy-six. Out of tires and tubes, janitorial supplies, contract services and lease rentals. Two balanced deficit budget amounts and amounts listed per budget. Precinct one. Road and bridge, capital outlay, five thousand plus, one ninety-eight thousand, hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred ninety. Out of part-time fuel and oil, tires and tubes, machine hire, road material instruction. Operating supplies, safety training, non-travel meals, utilities, maintenance repairs, building grounds and materials and other equipment. This is the paid down payment of, down the lease of the needed equipment. And road and bridge precinct four, capital outlay, two hundred and five thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. Out of road material, utilities, fuel, tires, tubes, machine hire and operating supplies for blade and mowers.
That's a lot of money. The, what blade is it that you're getting?
John Deere. Lease on a John Deere.
He's actually paying down the lease.
Paying down the lease.
Yes.
That wasn't both yours, we talked about before, the coming budget year. But you're paying a large chunk.
Trying to pay off the machines so that I can resell it as I have in the past. And I've made money on those machines. And John Deere has no problem with giving names of contractors to sell to. So if we can buy new machinery, keep it in warranty for five years and resell it anytime we want to and make money on it, then the taxpayer's not paying for the machine as we go forward. And that's what I've done in the past and was interrupted by the unitized system that built.
There is no issue with, with getting it at a cheaper through the buy board and then?
It is through the buy board.
But then you turn around and sell it for a higher?
There is no issue.
There won't be no. We don't sell any. I'll need another blade.
So what are you going to do once you pay it off? Just keep it after the five-year warranty's out? So you're going to stop it?
Keep three years.
Okay. So that's what we're talking about?
Yeah. Three years.
It's, it's odd to me that there's so much money coming out of the road and materials, you know?
That's the only way you're going to put it back. And I'm, my maintenance budget is going up exponentially, as you know, from the past monies that I've had to put in there out of road and bridge. I have not, we have not been able in all four precincts to be able to chip seal our roads because we don't have enough money to do that. And that's something that's very important. And so
A hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars doesn't cover chip seal? None?
It will. You can chip seal some, but if you can't, if you can't do it on a rotation like we used to do, then there is some of that that is going to fail.
Okay, so how much, how much roadage would that cover?
It's about fifteen or twenty thousand dollars a mile, probably twenty thousand a mile. So not much.
That's about five miles though.
You got a hundred and twenty-six miles, well, minus.
Do we need to change how we're, how we do the road material in the future and change the way we're doing the roads? If everybody's got between two and two hundred and fifty thousand, that's close to a million dollars in materials for roads, do we need to do one precinct one year, one precinct another year, one precinct another year? Just change it up to how we're doing things or? And I'm not talking about going back to a unitized system. I am not talking about that at all. But if we're giving back or putting money, this much money towards something else at the end of the year, why are we even putting that much in to begin with if we're not going to use it for what it's expressly for?
And we wanted to, but whenever your maintenance costs on your machines just as precinct three commissioner has been renting a John Deere for quite a while at a great expense and, and a lot of interest. This is a lot cheaper interest. And if we can get it paid off, then we can start using our road materials and hopefully get into a better situation where we can actually have, have machinery at very little cost to the taxpayer and do our roads.
Just for my information, how old is the, the machine you're?
One's two thousand, one's two thousand eight model. And I, I sold a five-year-old machine whenever I first came in for the same amount of money that was paid for five years previous. This machine is, as you can tell, two thousand eight to twenty nineteen, is eleven years old. That's possibly not going to sell from what we paid for.
Sure, but there is depreciation in equipment.
There is in maintenance, once you get outside of that five-year warranty period.
I agree.
I just spent eight thousand dollars on one machine just to get the computer reworked because it was out of warranty.
I understand that. How, how much is the yearly lease of the equipment?
Thirty, thirty-seven thousand five hundred.
What's the buyback at the end of the year?
One eighty, one eighty. But you paid all in interest as well.
But don't you also I'm going to use my situation. Terry, I hadn't rented, I sent the rent machine back in July. We have a new six seventy-two G in my yard. It was leased. Six-year lease. Thirty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-two cents a year for six years, full machine warranty. All we're out is wear items, tires, blades, blah, blah, blah. And at the end of that six years, I'm going to turn it back for somebody. And they can get another one. And it's, my deal was that we'd keep a machine six years, full warranty. And you turn back around, but again, is the lease going to be higher? Yes, because it's going to cost more. But that's the reason I did it. Because I I have roads I have to maintain and I couldn't take out two hundred grand to pay it down. And I don't, I personally don't know why you would want to. And I understand your taxpayer money. I do. But by the same token, we keep new machinery this way with less of a cost. That's, that's me.
And you said six-year lease. And I've never heard of a six-year lease. It's always been five.
Five years, six thousand, pardon me.
And so you never own it?
No.
And how many other machines do you have?
Three.
And so at what point are you going to need to get rid of those and, and do another lease? So you're going to have, you can wind up with four leases.
Probably not.
And lots of interest, well, depending on the, the maintenance problems that you have with those machines. These machines, unlike the old machines, are full of computers.
They're not bulletproof, that's for sure.
And they are causing a lot of problems. I know that within a year I can probably sell this machine for fifty thousand dollars more than I paid for it. That puts the money back in road and bridge. Okay, I put fifty thousand back and I've got a new machine.
And then at that time, when you do another lease, do you pay that two hundred thousand upfront again?
I would two hundred and fifty thousand at that point. We're going to pay down whatever we can.
Then you really don't put that money back. You put it back into the machine. Sure, but you're talking about fifty thousand then, right? And we're talking about a hundred and sixty thousand right now.
Yeah. The sooner you pay it off, the sooner you can sell.
And that's, that's pushing that back down the road a few years. We're, we're, we're at zero right now. And you're wanting to put a hundred and ninety-eight thousand into a machine instead of putting that back for, well, if, if we don't have, if a hundred and twenty-seven's not enough, a hundred and ninety-eight is even better. Plus a hundred and sixty is even better than that. To put up for roads instead of putting it all towards a machine right now so that we can possibly sell it for more later. Why don't we put that back where we can actually take care of our roads now? And then just pay the lease out as it's supposed to, as, as the agreement says that we normally do.
That's just it. We don't have enough money to redo our road weight needs anymore.
That's what I'm saying. If you put the money back in there into the reserve fund, that, that's a road and bridge reserve fund. And it would be specifically for that. Can't that money be used for those materials on top of what you have for next years?
So if we sold, if we could So if we sold, if we could do this and start the, get it rolling and get it doing, that's what I was doing before the unitized system. And you sell ten machines, you've made a half a million dollars.
When, do you have ten machines you're about to sell?
There are in this precinct, in this, in this camp. So there's, I mean, the more that you do, the more you can make. It's about being able to become financially sound again.
And that's, that's what I'm looking at for now, not for later down the road when we sell the ten machines.
If this court doesn't wanna do that, that's fine with me. If they wanna lease all the machines going forward, that's fine.
I tell you, I have no problem with, with doing the leases. If that's, you know, that's what you're saying, to pay down the lease of needed equipment. I understand doing a lease, and I understand you, but I have no problem with that whatsoever. My issue is putting so much upfront when we're in a strapped situation that we're pushing it off down the road again. And, um, at the end of the year, we've got a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, a hundred and sixty thousand, that's two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars that you could put right into, uh, if you, if you don't spend it on materials now, you've put it into the reserve fund and you can put it for next year. And that, that just helps you out. You can then do some roads. If that, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand would do five miles, on top of, I don't remember how much it was, two, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for road and, road materials and construction for next year, you're looking at ten to fifteen miles of road. And I know we're not gonna do every road every year. That's why we put the money into the budget each year for it, so we can do so many miles of road.
We usually do five miles. I mean, five years. We, we, we'd be around in five years. Ten miles a year.
Sure.
And you have a precinct of your...
Every precinct.
We do ten miles?
Every precinct. That's the only way you can do it, go get around with it.
Yeah, because at the end of the five years, every road and bridge.
That's right.
Sure. Yeah. I agree.
But that's, that's, uh... If you, if you've got so many roads.
So many miles.
So many miles of roads. Over here, it, it's about six years, six years or seven. We're doing it every six or seven years instead of five. We had it aware, when I was aware, we done it every five years. We done it all. But, and, uh... The fire, I think it's right at five years to redo. But it takes different per precinct. Got so many miles. I've got two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-four, six miles of road.
How much of that payment you know?
Probably half of it.
Half of it?
No, not quite.
Okay, you said, I was saying twenty bucks?
Twenty.
I'd been told around thirteen or fifteen.
Fifteen to twenty is what I said.
Maybe it was somebody else had you to tell me that thirteen to fifteen.
And we can figure it out.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying you're wrong. I just, that's what I thought, I'd read that. Because I've been told it's a little over twenty-one.
But I know it needs to be done. And like I said, if this court doesn't wanna do that, and I've said several times in court, that this is exactly what I was going to do in order to be able to be owners rather than leasing.
Right, my understanding, I, I guess I, I misunderstood because you put blades in your budget for next year. Okay, this is still...
But that's what I said, that I was gonna use any money I had left over for this year. That's why I haven't done anything more with the roads, because they can survive until next year.
Okay, I must have missed that.
What I needed, and that's fine. I know that it's, especially with two of us doing it, I know that that is, I did not know anybody else was even in, in contemplating doing it. So if leasing is what the majority of this court wants to do...
Well, that's, that's what it says you're doing too, is paying down the lease.
But I would have it paid off pretty quick and, and actually make money on it. But that's, I mean, that is not the...
That's a possibility, though.
It's almost a guarantee.
But it's not a guarantee.
Done it time and time again.
Okay. But this is a guarantee. This is...
Are you talking about the lease? Are you talking about the money?
No, I'm talking about the money.
Yeah, yeah, it is guaranteed, it's a lot of amount of money that would come out of the road and bridge fund, that's true.
Right, unless you went ahead and bought materials with...
There's no way to do that now, it's too late.
Okay, all right. Uh, what were you gonna say to him?
This two-hundred-and-five thousand, I put it over in there. We won't need all of it for that.
Right, you're talking about mowers too.
He is leasing rather than buying. You're not really gonna pay down a lease, you're gonna just lease. And, yeah, I don't have any problem with it. We can all lease, that, that's not something that, I mean, I'm, I've never been a leasurer. I hate leases, but, uh, I do understand the amount of money that you're talking about.
Sure, it goes back to the budget. Isn't budgeted, you know?
Well, that budget is budgeted. I just wanted to use it for a different thing. Neither was any of the other line item transfers that were done here today.
Sure, I understand that.
Rather than been done last month or last court meeting, thousands on thousands of dollars. You know? But that's fine, yeah, that, I don't, I don't have any problem with that, because it does seem like the majority of the court feels that way, and so I'm, I'm not gonna go over the court and try to force it.
No, I understand. Jim, um, what are you looking at buying? You're talking about a lease for a blade and you're talking about some mowers?
Yeah.
How many mowers?
Two.
Two. Is that...
A piece.
Twenty thousand a piece? So that's forty.
No.
No?
Sixteen, sixteen eight.
Sixteen eight each? The lady went down? Or you bought something different?
No.
Oh, they went down?
They went down.
Okay.
Are you getting invoices for that, like, this week?
Yeah.
Because we got to pay him about thirteen, or is it any paid this year?
Yeah, I, I certainly understand what you're saying, and I, I don't mind doing it, whatever. I just, I, I've had, I'd never lease a car.
Sure.
And I've always bought them, because I don't like interest.
I understand that, but we're in a situation where, you know, how much is one, one blade?
They're three hundred and thirty.
Three hundred and thirty thousand, so... Everybody needs a blade, you're looking at a million dollars and more than a million dollars in a hurry. And we're looking at, you, you said you were getting two on a lease. You said you were getting two on a lease this coming year.
There's no way to pay for them.
Right.
That's why.
And Jim's wanting one. We're looking at nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars right there.
But he's not talking about paying you down.
Yes, he is.
No, no.
He just put it in there.
How much are you, you're, you're at two-hundred-and-five thousand. Two, uh, mowers are sixteen five each, right?
Yeah.
So that's about thirty-five thousand. Where's the other seventy thousand going? Or a hundred and seventy?
That's what I say. I'm not gonna stand down.
It's gonna go back to the road.
Okay, but it's all going back to, but you're moving it all to capital outlay?
Just to make sure that he has enough in there to cover everything.
Okay. All right.
I, I put it all in there just to cover.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't say.
How much, how much then is your lease payment down to?
Be thirty-five, thirty-five.
Okay, so you're gonna be a lease of, you, you pay thirty-five, so you're looking at putting a hundred and thirty back into...
Yeah. Who, who's your lease company, Jim? You remember?
Yeah, Johnny.
You leased it through John Deere or through somebody that they recommended? Because mine's not through Deere.
No, it would, you didn't get it through Deere. You, you'll get it through Wichita thing.
Yeah, that's it. And that's something I didn't never understand, and I asked that guy about it, because I didn't have a lease payment through this year, which is completely backwards of any lease I've ever had. Paid it upfront.
And of course, they, they do that so they make more interest. You know, that is just like not paying your first payment on a house for two months, or three months. Well, you're paying interest that whole time. And they know that.
You're right, and they're gonna come and get your house too. Anyway.
Have no problem with it, Judge.
That's, that's just, I can see, I can see what's happening.
But I, I, I don't know if spending a whole two-hundred-and-five thousand, I just put it away.
He's, he's actually just doing a lease on my motor grader and two...
It all go back the same.
But that, that's just my thoughts on it. I mean, yep.
Well, I mean, yeah, I'll say it both ways too. That's a tremendous amount of money. And I think the thought is it's for one machine. I mean, that's just the thought. And the reason I leased it for me is so I wouldn't have to do that, and it would interfere with anything else I wanna do in the county as far as my precinct goes. That's why I didn't do, because of, you know, thirty-two thousand versus a hundred and ninety-eight, and results the same, but you're not spending a hundred and ninety-eight in a flat. That was, that, that was my, my thinking. But, uh, like I said, you know, you, you can pick anything apart, buying one versus leasing one, depending on where you are. But also, my deal was, with this lease, five years, I could do one. When that lease is up, if that's what you will do. Or if we're just flush with money and we wanna buy that one, which I don't know why you would, because it'll have six thousand hours on it.
And the warranty.
And the warranty. Because the warranty, and I guess you got it, coverage travel time, all of it, tear out nothing, it's a wear out of it. And that's hard to come by. It is hard to come by. And so that's the reason I did it.
What is the total interest that you know that you will pay over that five years?
Not off top of my head.
I, I mean, you're kicking the can, the can down the road as well.
You, you are kicking the can down the road, but...
It is at a less cost to the reserve.
It is, and we need to keep a can to be able to kick it down the road. Instead of emptying the bank account.
And that's what I wanted to do, was to find out, I mean, if it didn't work the way it has in the past, then, and, and not everybody, everybody else is leasing and I'm selling, it wouldn't take long to find out if it's better to lease or sell.
Over five years, at about thirty-five thousand, right?
No, thirty-two, four, where's?
How much are you paying total out, out, after, at, what's the total payout at five years?
The five years will be two eighty minus a hundred and sixty-five, what's that? Because a hundred and sixty thousand.
Hundred and sixty.
Hundred and sixty-five is my back.
A hundred and twenty? Paying thirty-five a year, it, it just says thirty-five a year, at five years, you're paying out a total of a hundred and seventy-five thousand. It was, which is less than paying upfront a hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
Of course, I've got two machines that I'll sell, and when I sell those machines, I was gonna put them on that painting. And rather than taking it out of my road and bridge so that I'd be able to pay it down, and then pay the lease payment from there on. But like I said, I, I don't have a problem with doing it either way. I don't like doing it the other way, but I will do it the other way. And I understand, and especially if this, these guys petition goes through, we're gonna be, we're gonna be on the world.
Sure, yeah, that's true. True.
I think if, if the other way I sell is a new machine, forty, the other two machines are, are old. I can't, can't sell them for what they're worth to me.
Sure.
I'll keep them till the lady gets up there. And try to sell.
Three point nine percent.
Yeah, mine was, I think mine was figured at like three point five, so it must have changed since you...
I'm sure it did.
And then our financial officer just said it. Yeah, it's fluid.
This was in September. And total payment was a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in the five years. If anybody wants to look at this, I'd be glad for you to do that.
That, that's just my thought, do the lease the way it's, it's supposed to be done, um, and, um, we'll save the rest of that money. I, I guess I misunderstood what you...
Oh, that's fine.
Where you were headed with that. My understanding is that you were gonna lease two next year, starting with that year.
Sorry, I wasn't planning to do that. I'll be glad to do it that way.
You have any thoughts on it? Are you having a thought?
Yeah, I always thank you, Dad. It's over him.
It's not over him, Martin.
I said two over him. Two machines?
Listen to him.
I don't thank you. I don't thank you.
Yeah, but I'm getting...
So what do you all wanna do on these?
I will, uh, rescind the amount of money, it'll be seventy-something thousand rather than a hundred and twenty, a hundred and ninety-eight.
The only thing I'll throw in right quick, and I mentioned yesterday, uh, the guru, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to turn back the money that I thought I was, because I ain't got it. And then he got screwed out of something too. But it's kinda hard. If we're not doing something, and God only knows, though, stuff is worn out, I know that. But if we're not trying to do something, we can't ask that lady right back down to do anything either. We've got to show them that we've let our pants down one every time like they do if they weren't there. And, uh, so, uh, you know, I, I just think that, uh, I just think this, at this time, even this man right there, surprise me that he would lie here and tell us how bad shape we're in. But he's right.
He knows.
And that, he said the only time, the first time I've hurt anybody, and I'm sure some said it, and I wasn't listening. But we need at least three. Well, maybe like six months is what we really need.
Oh, I agree.
And, uh, you know, and, and you've got to start in here to try and get that. And, uh, so, uh, no, I, uh, you know, I, I, I hope one of these days I can get one, I am too. But, uh, yeah, one of my main things is, is when it rains and you ain't got the machinery to go across it, you're thinking about water, because you didn't get across it. So that don't pay either, you know?
Well, you can't put enough water on to actually maintain the fence.
I know a fella that said you didn't have water too, right? I've been told you do have to.
You do have to.
On that end down, I ain't gonna go for you. You know, but that's a lot of things I ain't found out yet.
But, you know, if we were financially flush, and we all had the money to buy, that's what I'd do. That's what I would do, but we're not.
So let me be clear. Whenever I sell the two machines I have now, you want me to put that money back in the road and bridge fund, is that all right? I just wanna be clear.
What are your machines?
All right, that's fair enough. I'll do that.
Okay, so are...
What do you need now, is right?
That line item transfer, is it gonna be redone, or is...
I can redo it and bring it to you.
Yeah, um, we'll just take that one out, and we'll do it for the next court. We're gonna have it on Tuesday. So we'll do it again for that one, so we'll pull that one out, and I guess then also that check. We'll pull that out too, and we'll have to redo. We'll pull that out too, and we'll have to redo that. So I'll have to have a good invoice.
Okay, I'll get into you today.
So Jim, you're not going to, you don't put mowers and lease out of yours, correct? You're not gonna stand up with it?
No, no, huh, no.
Okay, calm down, I did that.
I just wanted to get it in there. It'd be the same thing as putting it in there.
Line items and budget amendments?
We're very different there.
Need a motion to approve.
So we're gonna approve all the line item transfers and budget amendments with exception of materials, decisionally due.
Yeah, that's correct. We did just not to accept mine.
Right, we're pulling that one out. So that one's not submitted. The rest will be submitted.
I pulled his.
I made the motion to accept all the precinct ones.
Second.
All in favor? Accounts payable?
Okay, the accounts payable is. Well, I have to take out the. So it, on here is one point four, one million four hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. We will be pulling out the check for a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four seventy-nine, whatever it was. So that, the difference will be one, well. Yeah, cause we'll do another one for the next bill. So one point two million, two hundred and fifteen thousand, seven, two hundred and seventy-seven and seventy-nine.
Well, thank you, ma'am. We gotta pay the bills.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, thank you.
I just hate.
My, my thing went dead. It turned off. Just, just I have battery. Did Mitch decide not to talk, I guess?
This is Connie Welker.
Who was he?
Mitch Higman from B's Beverley.
I guess he decided not to talk.
Okay, let's start going in there, Jim.
So I make copies and what do we got? Christmas.
You've got a whole lot of.
I do have a whole lot of paperwork. I've got stacks of it.
Do you have the original bond?
Do I have it? Or does Angela?
Angela, do you have the original bond?
I got some things with tabs on it. That means she wants me to have signed. Okay, it's right here.
I think that's it right there.
Yeah, there it is. I know, if I look for.
I do need to.
And then I need you to, you to sign the order for the.
I have to email the, uh, signed copy to, uh, Chris Gertz's pocket of the Attorney General.
Does somebody have a spare one of the packet from Davidson that I can get?
Are you saying you, Sean?
I got, I got the one from y'all's current guy, but not.
You don't have one for DA Davidson. I think he must've ate it.
I think he picked them up. He has three. If you're missing something, look at Craig. No, that's true. Thank you.
So whenever, after you get, or can I take that one down there so I can email it to him and then I'll bring you the original out? Do I need to sign it? Okay.
That'll work.
There you go, ma'am. Thank you.
Now I just put it all in there and it's all wound back to the.
Okay, that's fair.
Yeah, I'm getting mixed up when you explain too.
I've talked too much.
You thought I was gonna spend that whole hundred and five thousand?